Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to call the meeting to order. This is Pennington County Planning Commission meeting, September 25th, 2023. And recommendations to Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at their regular meeting on October 3rd, 2023, at 10:30 a.m. Just for your knowledge, at 10:30, they take on planning items. So it would be spread over a certain amount of time. It will not just automatically start at 10:30. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms, which are available in the commission chambers during the meeting. If you are the applicant, you do not need to fill out the speaker request form. Roll call. Everyone's here? Approval of the September 11th, 2023 minutes. The commission members had an opportunity to review those minutes in their agenda packet. And if so, the chair would take a motion to approve them.
I move to approve the minutes of September 11th, 2023.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the September 11th, 2023 meeting minutes of the Planning Commission. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Approval of the agenda. Have you all had an opportunity to review your packet? And if so, the chair would take a motion to approve that agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve today's agenda for the Planning Commission. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Consent agenda. Good morning, Brittany.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any Planning Commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this Planning Commission and certain items from the agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Item number three is conditional use permit review CU 9937 for Country Road Estates LLC to review a mobile home park in a suburban residential district. And staff recommends approval of the review of conditional use permit CU 9937 with conditions. Item number four is conditional use permit review CU 1218 for Paul and Don Marso to review a vacation home rental in a suburban residential district. And staff recommends approval of the review of conditional use permit CU 1218 with conditions. Item number five is conditional use permit review CU 1725 for Donald Wachowski to review one pole barn and three greenhouse structures. And to review one pole barn structure and to allow one pole structure to remain where the principal structure, when the principal structure is removed from the property in a suburban residential district. And staff recommends approval of the review of conditional use permit CU 1725 with conditions. Item number six is conditional use permit review CU, excuse me, 1903 for Joseph and Terry Crager to review a storage shed garage as a primary structure in a suburban residential district. And staff recommends approval of the review of conditional use permit CU 1903 with conditions. Item number seven is conditional use permit review CU 2108 for Joseph Wright to review a vacation home rental in a suburban residential district. And staff recommends approval of the review of conditional use permit CU 21-08 with conditions. Item number eight is conditional use permit review CU 21-19 for Boyd and Sabrina Knudsen to review living in a recreational vehicle temporarily while building a cabin in an agriculture district. And staff recommends to continue the review of conditional use permit CU 2119 to the October 10th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. Item number nine is conditional use permit review CU 2120 for Boyd and Sabrina Knudsen to review a bath house as a primary structure in an agriculture district. And staff recommends to continue the review of conditional use permit CU 2120 to the October 10th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 10 is conditional use permit review CU 2234 for Joseph Wright to review a vacation home rental in a suburban residential district. And staff recommends approval of the review of conditional use permit CU 2234 with conditions. Item number 11 is conditional use permit review CU 2242 for Brian Wagner to review an accessory structure as a primary structure in a suburban residential district. And staff recommends approval of the review of conditional use permit CU 22-42 with conditions. And finally, item 12 is planning unit development overlay review PU 1901 for Brink Constructors, Inc., BCI Properties LLC. Zane Brink is the agent to review an apprenticeship training facility for linemen of Brink Construction and a planned unit development. And staff recommends approval of the review of planned unit development overlay PU 19-01 with conditions.
Thank you, Brittany. Before we do a motion on this, anyone have any recommendations for clerical errors on any of those items? Staff would like to poll any of those items. The commission, would they prefer pulling any of those items?
Five, 11, and 12.
Okay. Been requested to poll five, 11, and 12. Anyone from the audience that would like to have an item polled from the consent agenda? We do have one vote. Either we'll pass or fail on the unit based on the motion. Chair will address a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar, which would be three, four, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. We would move on to number five.
You lead the round, Planning and zoning.
Good morning. When we had this the other week, I looked at it, and I'm still confused now.
Confusing, yes.
You've got one pole barn, three greenhouses, and another pole barn. And then when you look at the building permits and what's going on, you show one pole barn, and then the other lot has a double-wide mobile home and then two sheds.
Yeah. He's not gotten around to completing it. He's been out of the country for a few years, and he has not had a chance to build these other structures. But he's back now, and we met with him the other day, and his plan is to move forward with the plan now.
So are these sheds the greenhouses, or they're separate? Oh, they're different deal.
No, those are existing structures.
Okay. Well, that's the only question I had. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we accept item agenda five.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve, per staff's recommendation, conditional use permit review 17-25 with eight conditions. Discussion. From the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. On to item number 11.
Well, it's you again. So here we go. When you look at page three, it looks like a car wash. What are we looking at? It's supposed to be a 50 by 100 garage?
Yeah, that was the building that was permitted. It has received an initial inspection as well, so to our knowledge, it's meeting what the building permit that was permitted.
What is it?
It's, he defines it as a storage facility, or for him, personal, for personal use only. As like a garage, storage facility.
It looks better than a house.
It's very nice, yeah. It was very nice. It was kind of surprising to see it when it went out there.
Okay. Well, that was my only question. If you guys are satisfied with it, then I have no problem if that's what it is. Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we accept agenda item number 11.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve, per staff's recommendation, conditional use permit 22-42 with seven conditions. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. On to item number 12.
Number 12. The question I have on this is very simple, because we had this in front of us a couple times. Have they started operations yet for the apprentices?
Yes, they've been operating for several years.
Okay.
It's been, it's an ongoing training facility.
And is it, it's just for Brink?
Yes, they train their linemen there, yep.
Not other people, just Brink?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. All right. Here again, that's all I had. Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we accept item number 12 on the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve overlay review CU 19-01 with, sticky fingers here, the 18 conditions. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. On to item number 13.
Cody Sack, Environmental Planner. Item 13 is special consideration to Trailwood Village Planning Development, PU 23-11. It's a special consideration to reduce the setback from 25 feet to eight feet on the west and southwest, which are both rear lot lines for a house addition, and to bring an existing accessory structure into compliance. The applicant and landowner is Brian and Brian Horse. Location is 3025 Preston Place. Current zoning is planning to development, existing land use is residential, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Currently on the property, there is a single-family residence that was built in 2004. There's no onsite wastewater treatment system as it's on Rapid Valley Sanitary District. This was routed around for an apartment review. The addressing coordinator came back and said the address must be posted, and the county highway is not opposed since it's a rear lot line, as long as it's outside of the eight-foot drainage zone. Staff performed a site visit, and owners would like to build an addition to the existing house. There is one shed in the rear, rear lot that does not meet the setback. Will require a building permit. It was put, it was placed there in 2004, and it's 12 by 14, so a building permit would have to be obtained as well. Staff has not received any complaints or concerns regarding the request for the special consideration. Staff is recommending denial of special consideration to Trailwood Village Planning Development PU 23-11, as there is no special addition that exists that would excuse literal enforcement, depending upon his zoning ordinance. However, if the Planning Commission disagrees and approves the request, staff recommends the following conditions be included.
Thank you, Cody. Questions for Cody?
I have a question.
Go right ahead.
The ditch behind, does that run with water when there are rainstorms? I missed what you said about flood hazard.
So there is no special flood hazard area on the property? I believe that's the Hawthorne ditch, so there would, there could potentially be water that runs through there.
Any other questions for Cody? I've got a couple. I actually, going through this, I'm not, I don't get a lot of heartburn about passing it. And the reason being is, I'd get, like to look for the planning department to give me some direction as to the commons, whether it's a commons drainage, what it's doing. But also the fact that it's a PUD, and what is the feeling of the neighbors that are around there? If the applicant had some of those neighbors that didn't oppose it, I'm saying since it's a PUD, I'd just as soon stay with the flow. But I don't know what the rest of the commission's thinking. I didn't have a lot of heartburn over this versus denying it because of the space. Or perhaps maybe the applicant can design just a tad different, compensate or give and take a little like we've done on other, what would I call, lot line clearances. Anyway, that's my point, and I know you're addressing this for Christine, but it just looks like there's satisfactory room, and if neighbors and a PUD, it just, I mean, it'd be better to work with the people that own the property.
Cody, is this on peers? It looks like it must be at the same level as the second. Is this a tri-level?
Um, I'm not sure. I believe so, yes. I think there's a basement in the, a basement, like living room floor.
Is the applicant here? I should have asked. I'm sorry. You are allowed to come up, please, but you have to introduce, you have to come up and introduce your, the records. There's people watches, and they have to know who's speaking.
I'm Brian Horse, the owner. And yes, I'd like to build it on peers and have storage underneath there to expand my family room, basically. So the flood situation, it would be up, might flood, flood the slab in a terrible situation. It might flood the slab, but that would all be storage underneath there.
Can I ask you, well, as I pointed out to Cody, is it something where you could get the approval of some of the adjacent neighbors?
Uh, we've had, yeah, we know all our neighbors, and nobody's opposed. We've talked to several of them. I haven't brought any literature in, but we've had to sign up, and you really can't see much of the property with the trees that grow in the back in the summertime, in the wintertime.
Right.
Yeah. But nobody's been opposed, and I know all of my neighbors, so, yeah.
I'm just, all I was bringing that up is I would have more of an, to extend this one meeting and get that information, so I felt comfortable. It is a PUD, and we have a tendency not to, we certainly enforce the rules of PUDs as they were originally set up, but we've been more flexible.
Sure.
About dealing with it, because it is a different type of property and structure.
I'm willing to work with you guys on however you want.
I don't know what the rest of the commission's thinking.
I have approached all my neighbors. I just haven't brought the documentation in for it. But if you need documentation from the neighbors, is that something you generally look for?
I would feel more comfortable in this case, but as well as some more explanation on the commons or the flows, so that we don't end up in a flood situation, Cody. In my case, I don't, I'm not, I'm not speaking for any other.
So, Cusack, Environmental Planner, there is no flood plane on the property, so for flows, we wouldn't have any of that information or anything. It's not to say that it couldn't flood, and it's just we don't have any information on what the elevations would be if it did flood.
Can I ask how long you've owned the property? Have you ever had flooding up that high from the ditch?
No. I mean, we've seen it maybe three foot in the ditch at the worst. And the house has a sump pump that has been on one time.
Oh, I wish mine was that high.
Mr. Chair, I would say that this increases the square footage. It's going to increase the value of this property. The neighbors are probably going to be happy, because as this property goes up in value, their property goes up in value typically, so.
Are you telling me there's something you could be comfortable about just passing it today rather than, as I suggested?
I'd be comfortable today.
Okay. I can understand that, Kevin. Anyone else like to weigh in before we? Any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair, I would be inclined to agree with the chairman, and not because I don't want to see this gentleman affect the change that he wants to affect. But I think it, once again, lends a little gravity to these kinds of exceptions. And I think that rather than make a blanket sort of PUD statement, I would prefer that we do what the chairman has recommended. And I don't believe it creates much of an impediment for you. It doesn't really create significant cost, and I think I would feel better about that. And I think it would also affirm the message that we want to keep within the best planning practices. Ideally, it's to leave it the way it is, but in this case, we would entertain a change, and that would be my feeling.
Would you care to make a motion to that?
Yes, I would make a motion to that effect, that.
I'm just going back to improving my property value for the whole neighborhood. Yeah, is kind of where I'm at. How far do you want me to branch out to get signatures that don't oppose them?
My comment was just adjacent. Any property owner that was.
Okay, is that including across the ditch?
It would be wise. It's certainly a neighborly thing to do, but we'd look at what you submit.
Yeah, well, they're parking cars on the other side of that ditch, so, yeah, cars that probably don't run, yeah, so.
Good luck.
Yeah. Okay.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to continue this for, what's the next meeting?
October 10th.
October 10th, with the applicant to provide us with some neighbor, neighbor input.
Right. Okay, thank you, guys.
Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. On to 14.
Cody Sack, Environmental Planner. Item 14 is conditional use permit CU 23-32. It's to allow a caretaker's residence on the subject property. The applicant and owner is St. Patrick LLC. Location is 23021 High Seega Road. It's currently its own commercial district with an existing use of the restaurant, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. Upon review by staffs, my staff found some concerns. Specifically, the septic hasn't been approved by the state for mixed use for residential and commercial uses. There's no verification that the structure meets fire and building codes. It appears that there's a couple of recreational vehicles that are being used as living quarters on the property. And whether a caretaker's residence is allowed within that commercial structure. Staff has notified the applicant and landowner of these issues, and we just need additional time to work through some of these. So staff's recommending to continue conditional use permit CU 23-32 to the October 10th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Move to approve staff's recommendation to continue this item?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve, per staff's recommendation, to continue 23-32 to the October 10th, 2023 meeting. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. I just had one. The letter, Cody, that was submitted along with this does have rather strong opposition. And I guess when we are ready to propose this review or this approval, it would mean a lot to me to know what's the history of this sort of approval. I don't think there's been a lot of these in the county.
Um, not that I can think of. The most recent one I can think of was an RV park for Prairie Berry for Cecil for their employees. That's the only one I can really think of off the top of my head, but I can research that and see.
Okay. Just that's where the questions I could see going, is because it is an unusual request to have a caretaker's residence right in the building that's a commercial building.
Correct. And when staff put in the concern about if it's allowed or not, and in our zoning ordinance, it specifically says that it has to be an accessory structure, so that's something that we're trying to work out.
That's going to come up.
So.
Yeah.
Just part of meeting with them is figuring out different options as well.
You exactly hit it. That's going to come up, though. Thank you. The other.
I agree, Mr. Chair, that we need some more background information. It's, I mean, I understand the housing crisis and people trying to find housing here and being able to keep your employees and being able to provide them a spot for them to live while they work and keep a business operating, I think is a good idea. But I don't see how, as a commissioner up here, approving that, you know, I would need some more background to make me feel comfortable that that is something that's in our ordinances and stuff.
It wasn't in the county, but it was within incorporated cities of the counties. We had a death that's related to a caretaker's residence in a business in this county. So, from a fire, not that long ago. Okay, thank you. Any other discussion from the commission? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. On to item number 15.
Megan Talwich, Planner. Agenda item number 15 is conditional use permit CU 23-30 is to allow a vacation home rental on the subject property. The applicant and owner is Catherine and Jack Eggy, and their local contact is Sally Kelts. This is located at 13025 Pine Cliff Drive, and the lot size is 2.43 acres. The current zoning is suburban residential district with a residential land use, and there is no flood hazard on the property. The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the Planning Commission may consider in their review of conditional use permits, and they're listed on the screen. On June 6th, 2023, a violation was opened due to a complaint on the property that it was operating as a vacation home rental without a conditional use permit. When the applicant was notified of the violation, they stopped renting and has been working with us to come into compliance since. And the staff performed a site visit on September 13th and found that the address needs to be posted, but there were no other concerns. And so staff recommends approval with 15 conditions on conditional use permit 23-30.
Is your applicant here?
Yes.
Okay. I asked the question I forgot was, Cody, I'm sorry. Any questions for Megan?
I have a question, Megan. So the only problem was that it was, the address was not posted. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Well, the applicant was operating independent of our ordinance, obviously renting it through Airbnb or one of those. They, doing so, they complied in every case with what we required, with the exception of the address, which might have simply been an oversight of some kind, which sort of indicates why people continue to do this without signing up with the county, because they provide all the services. With, you know, Airbnb gets its cut, of course, but that's always going to happen. So I think it's illustrative of the difficulty of this whole vacation home rental thing, when we're, we have private franchise operators who are really dictating the standards. And I'm sometimes in favor of letting private business dictate the standards, but this kind of concerns me a little bit. Anyway, it's an observation, and it has no impact on the choices made by the applicant. But I think it's interesting that this whole issue about what kind of regulation we get, how we get it, and so forth. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mine's not an observation. Are you aware of, or the planning ever aware of, does the Department of Revenue ever take the time to somewhat look into these things? I mean, they operate without a sales tax license. If I, if we had John Doe out here with a little mechanic shop, they'd be after them. People that don't take these sales tax, that's serious business. This is, to me, it's just another place where the state doesn't help us enforce the vacation home rental rules. That meant this, this operation, and I'm not just picking on them, there's a whole ton of them out there, and the state's not collecting their sales taxes, and they seem to be not too concerned about it.
Well, what I find more irritating is that many of them are paying their sales taxes. They've got a license, and they're paying them, and the state collects the revenue, and we don't know about it.
We don't know.
We know nothing about it.
That was my point here.
The left hand.
Is the planning ever aware of where there's been any follow-up on the Department ever revenue to know these things or not know them, I guess, is what I'm saying. Sure you can. Please come up and introduce yourself for the record, please.
Catherine Eggy, half of the Jack and Kathy. And, thank you. I'm confused where the address was missing, so we can come back to that, but it's more the issue of the sales tax. I spent considerable time on the phone. They work with Airbnb, and Airbnb collects it. Now, what I needed to do was to file for an excise tax, which I did. And twice a year, I need to provide a report that shows, here's what the revenues came from, and here's the taxes that were collected by Airbnb. The concern that they had was not the 4%, but the 1.7%. That's the tourism tax that goes on top of it.
Sure.
So I need to dig into, before January, when I have to file the report, I need to dig into revenues. I need to dig into revenues that came in since July first and compare, and forgive my mask, but my mother's been really sick, and I don't want to pass anything on that she might have. And so I need to check how much they withheld for sales tax and charge, they just pass the charge on to the the person who's renting. And if they did not include the one point seven, then I am responsible for it.
So you're saying they did follow up with you?
Yes, and they they send a report, and I have to file it twice a year. And they were pretty well astute as to how Airbnb worked. And they just wanted to make sure that the tourism tax was included, or else I am responsible for it.
Catherine, I agree with you. The committee that just went through here also on sales taxes did find that there, and it was written up that way, to allow Airbnb to collect the sales taxes, and they do properly.
And they do collect, yes.
Yeah, they they handle it correctly with the state. It is the difference in the tax, you're correct, that they still have to have a tax license. So that's nice to hear that somebody is following up, because I wondered about it.
And that somebody's ultimately responsible.
Sure, and that somebody's paying those taxes because they're collecting, they should be collecting them.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Catherine?
First of all, thank you for coming in to compliance and working with us to do that.
Thanks for having me.
And I'm not picking on you or anything like that. I'm just trying to gain information. Did you understand that you had to be approved with a?
No, sir, I did not. We started the Airbnb in twenty-one because we just aren't getting out here anymore. And yet, we want it to be our retirement home when it's time to do retirement. Was great for our children when we were growing up. They loved coming out here. And so we went the route of trying to do it. And we, we have, we have requirements that there has to be children that rent with them. So it's family units that we're getting. That's aside from the fact that you're asking. We asked, and probably not the right people, but nobody within the planning, within the the unit, the development, could answer our question to say, yes, we needed to do that. I have looked and seen that there has been longstanding vacation rental legis, requirements to do a conditional use permit. But I also saw that the vacation rentals really didn't define the short-term rentals. And so I then started to look at your meetings and saw that in April, this became an issue of putting the Airbnbs into the vacation rental. At least, that's how I was reading your reports. And then there was a chance for some reports, some comments to go out. And I don't know what list, I don't know if that went out to people who were registered as vacation rentals. But the first I became aware of it was July fifth, when I got the letter. And that was the first notice. And I contacted them July sixth, and I've been working diligently with Megan, who's very, very helpful since that point in time.
I appreciate that. We just have a lot of operators that are are not working under our ordinance. And so I'm trying to help, you know, I'm trying to understand for myself why, what's keeping them from coming into compliance?
Yeah, I think that one thing is when you, when you turn around and you aren't in compliance, then your name isn't out there anyway. So when all of a sudden there's discussion on it, you don't, unless you're not from here, unless you turn around and find reading minutes and that type of thing, you don't really know. Now, we had followed that Custer in Hill City had taken some action. And so we followed those issues because we knew that it was being talked in those two communities. But until I received that letter on July fifth, I was not aware that that we needed to do that.
Thank you. It's helpful.
You're welcome.
Can I add something?
Go right ahead.
Our frustration is that apparently sales taxes are being collected, but we don't, the state won't communicate with us on on those. So we don't have a way to 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 check to see who is in compliance with our ordinance. So it's a communication lag between the county and the state that's that frustrates us.
I've been in that position so many times. I know exactly what you're saying. You know, again, you have to file this form twice a year. So I will get a notice, I will get the form, and it has to go in. Do I have the power to demand that they send you a copy? I don't know, but could I send you a copy? Be happy to.
Oh.
But that doesn't solve the bigger problem that.
The bigger problem is we'd like to have a list of who is paying taxes as a
Right.
as a vacation home rental or Airbnb.
And then how do you compare that with people that are actually doing it? I mean.
It would simplify everything for planning, but we don't, we can't get that.
Right.
It's protected information, I guess.
Well, I tried to find out who who notified because I wanted to make sure that I, they had no complaints. But yeah, you're right. It's frustrating when there's just some piece of equipment or information that would really help you that it's difficult to get. But it's our intent not to cheat the sales tax. And it's been our our belief that Airbnb has all along collected that air, that tax and forwarded to the state. And it's only the concern that I need to check on the one point seven percent.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Catherine? Thank you, Catherine. I appreciate it.
Move to approve conditional use permit twenty-three dash thirty.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Just, I wanted to point out to our commissioner, who's got the vacation home rental. It appears local contact people need to help some of these people that are not necessarily residents that are involved with this because here's Airbnb doing their thing, collecting taxes. And our ordinance, we had ordinances in place. And the local contact doesn't advise that, hey, we've got an ordinance to meet in Pendleton County. So that may be something to consider in your review of the the new ordinance in that regard. There should be some responsibility. We, this this tax thing has always been avail, available, but it's not an avenue for us to to work with. And yet, we have local people working with out-of-town people that don't understand Pendleton County's trying to get their ducks in order and get it done. So it it was just a point I was making because I sat through all these committee meetings for twenty years and and I never even thought about a local contact has some responsibility to advise some of these people from out of town what's going on. Maybe that should be in the ordinance.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I think this is a good example of a lot of the non-conforming operations out there. If they're using Airbnb, Booking.com, any one of those, they have on their data sheet when they get a booking. Now, in her situation, they collect it. Some of the other ones just have the amount that's on there. So unless they're just really somebody trying to stay under the guidance of a an ordinance, they know that they have cell tax to collect and to pay. And, you know, I have to say that our minutes are probably not on the top ten reading list. That if you're not, somebody doesn't tell you, or you're not just in the loop of that, they probably don't know, you know, just like she was doing there, that you need a license and to do that. So I think that that's a very good example of a number of the ones that are operating Airbnbs or short-term rentals.
Catherine, if you'd just let me though, but they, we still didn't collect the bed and breakfast tax until now. She's reviewing to to make sure that those payments were made and it was collected. It wasn't an automatic thing with Airbnb. In other words, the state wants to know whether somebody remitted them. So that's another factor that can be considered. But again, even when it comes to the local taxation, if we were just to say that for operating a business, Kevin, you and I both had to know what our responsibilities were under the sales tax law. Well, when somebody is not local, they should be advised of that by somebody. Well, if you got a local context, it would look to me like it's their responsibility to tell you that. Go ahead, Catherine.
Thank you. Just one additional comment. When I talked with the tax people, their concern wasn't so much the Airbnb, other than the one point seven percent to check on that. But they made it clear that any time that I rented it to friends, family, and brought revenue in, that I needed to point that out and and include that. And I don't charge family, I guess, and they have stayed there. But so, yeah, there's a whole issue of people that just rent their house and don't go through the Airbnb and don't have that automatic connection going on. And I I understand that now why you would do that and have the headache. But there's ads in the paper all the time of places up for rent that don't have that safety net of Airbnb, so.
Thank you, Catherine. And just for the record, we're talking about the same political organization we work with that says it's just fine to rent the thing for no taxes for fourteen days. The same exact political organization. And I heard the commissioner say they, I mean, you just want to fall down the floor when you think about this and then what you go on through. In other words, you could, if you were not involved in vacation home rental, you could rent your place for fourteen days. We have people that are in vacation home rentals saying, oh, no, we only rent it for fourteen days. So what does a person like Megan, who's trying to do the proper write-up and follow-up from the plan? How can she contest it, sit out front for fourteen days and find out? It's just some of this gets to be too bizarre. So, anyway, thank you, Catherine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
Any other discussion? There's a motion on the table from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We're on to item number sixteen, I believe.
Megan Talmadge, planner. Agenda item number sixteen is rezone RZ twenty-three dash twelve is to rezone five acres from agriculture district to ranchette district. The applicant owner is Richard and Christine Van Ness. The location is twenty-three eighteen zero, Highway three eighty-five. And the lot size affected is five acres. Their current zoning is agriculture district and the existing land use is residential. There is no flood hazard on the property.
Questions? Or are you still going on?
I'm still going, sorry.
All right, sorry. I was reading through myself. Caught me.
Chair, oh, I'm sorry. We're not ready for questions yet.
Yep, she just had a hesitation, and I jumped in there. Apologize.
I had to get everything set up, I'm sorry. This rezone is, was also submitted with a layout plan. And it was requesting that the twenty-acre property be divided into a five-acre and a fifteen-acre lot. The layout plan will provide access to the five acres being rezoned. And the five acres is currently vacant of any structures. And so staff recommends to approve RZ twenty-three dash twelve because it seems in harmony with the current surrounding zoning and future land use.
Questions for Megan?
Mine was answered.
Megan, this appears to be like in order, and and I guess I went by their drawing here, where the five acres they're at. It kicked a little bit of where we're not rezoning, but it certainly fits in the representation of the rest of the properties around it.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Megan? Chair, address a motion.
I move to approve RZ twenty-three dash twelve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, approve, rezone RZ twenty-three dash twelve. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried on to item number seventeen.
Good morning, commissioners. Again, Brittany Molliter, Planning Director. Item number seventeen is Major Plan Unit Development Amendment Review PU nineteen dash zero six to review an amendment to an existing plan unit development to allow for townhomes, apartments, and commercial businesses. Since this is on your agenda last, staff has met with the applicant's agents regarding all of the checklist items that needed to be done. So we met with them last Tuesday, so they're working through that. They have submitted some more information to our office, so we're working through the process. So with that, staff will be recommending to continue the review of Major Plan Unit Development Amendment Review nineteen oh six to the October tenth, twenty twenty-three planning commission meeting.
Question is for Brittany. One of the things I pointed out before the meeting to some of the commission members is, I believe you're the one that pointed it out to me, that even though we're pretty structured as far as our planning and our county incorporation and where that planning applies and everything, we don't have such a thing or the setup for such a thing as a stop-work order. Like other organizations, you have to go a different route if you wanted to stop somebody from continuing construction. Is that correct?
We can do a stop-work order. Right, we can do a stop-work order, and then it goes up to the state's attorney's office, and they have some of their avenues.
It goes through that, yeah, rather than your people being able to issue it like a lot of incorporated areas have where their their own people can call it for a short time, like ten days or whatever. We don't have that in our system.
We do actually have the stop-work order. We do. And typically, we try to work through this process with the applicants, and that's what we're doing here.
Before you get to that.
Right, some of the things that are holding them up is they have to get a road name put in. So they have to work with nine one one. They'll bring it in front of this commission and the board of commissioners. So they can't get their building permits issued till they have the road name. But they did submit all of their information for their building permit. So they're working through, they have some things with their water system that needs to be updated. They submitted information for their septic system, so there's just a lot of information and a lot of.
You have to apply our new building permit requirements then, even though these buildings are done. And that's where I was going with this question. These buildings are in a in a great or a high percentage of completion, let's say, just for the lack of a better term. In other words, when, then how do you go back and review those?
We do them the best we can with the information that's available. They did submit information. They did get their state permits for electrical and plumbing.
Okay.
So those are some of the things we verify.
That certainly helps.
Yes. And so there's ways for us to do it, but it might not be, you know, we do it with as much information as.
It might not go as expeditiously.
Correct, or they might not get an actual, they might just get somewhat of a conditional certification of compliance because there are some things that we couldn't verify because we couldn't see.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. So, so they can go ahead and build something without a building permit. Is that right?
Well, they're not supposed to. They, there is penalty fees associated.
So my question is, is there a penalty there?
There is.
Okay, and I assume they will suffer that penalty?
Correct.
Okay. Well, that's my concern because it sounds like we're just continuing it for their convenience without some kind of consequence. And I I understand there are other complications at different levels. But I I would hope to see that they would be complying in the same way that the people who were just in here expect to comply.
Right, they do have to pay double on all of their building permits for the structures that weren't permitted, so.
My last question regards to their water. It seems to be adequate water out there under what the rights are right now. Is is he looking to expand to those other areas around there and maybe make a centralized water system?
Currently, it's just for the Rockerville area, to my knowledge. That's his proposal to the state. They are working through with a company because there are over that fifteen units, twenty-five people. They're regulated under the Safe Drinking Water Act, so they have to have a certified operator that manages it. So they're working with
And developing that right now.
consultant to do that. So that's part of that process.
They're probably gonna get that in place before they start looking to.
Right, I do believe they have that in place, so it's working through that and working through the state and having that information for the state.
Thank you. Any other questions for Megan? Chair would address a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we continue item number seventeen until, for a date?
October tenth.
October tenth.
Second. Moved and seconded to, per staff's recommendation, continue PUR one nine dash zero six to the October tenth, twenty-three planning commission meeting. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried on to eighteen.
So item eighteen is the county board report. The board of commissioners concurred with the planning commission's recommendations from the September eleventh, twenty twenty-three planning commission meeting.
Questions for Brittany? Questions for Brittany?
I have, just not about the county board report, but when will they start discussing the vacation home rentals?
October third. At their October third meeting.
Any other questions for Brittany on the county? Items from the public? From the staff?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Apologize that I could not make last week, or last month's meeting. Work will always take precedence, and unfortunately, my meeting went a lot longer than what was anticipated, so. Sorry I was not here to help make any decisions or hear that testimony.
Thank you.
On a before charity.
Any other items from the membership?
Mr. Chair. Oh, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I'm just gonna say it was great catching up with all y'all once again through this, this last month of September.
It was.
Since I used to be sitting on this commission, so I, I'm glad that we get, at, at least get to rotate through, so I can visit again, so.
Well, I wanted to point out, it's in this likely review of vacation home rental, which comes up again and again. That's difficult for you folks to review, sit there and, and look at as a whole package. And again, this was an item uh that we spoke about today uh that never had come up in any meeting I ever sat in, but we'd never even thought about. The local contact person has, and they do have some responsibility to be telling some of these people certain things so that they stay within what the county expects of an operator. But anyway, that's enough said, and it's the planning, it's the board of commissioners, the elected officials that have the say now, so. And it's a good thing, I think, that we ship over to you to look at. I think it was, we, we spent a lot of time.
We did. It was time.
Anything else for membership? Hearing none, I ensure addressing a, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.
Moved and second to adjourn. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. We are adjourned.